Good morning and welcome to the Board of Hillsborough County Commissioners this morning for the meeting of Wednesday, October 6, 2021. And we will start this morning with, we have a virtual meeting, so we'll do a roll call, if we could.
Kim?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Commissioner White is not here at this time. He left a memo that he would be late for this morning's regular board meeting due to unforeseen circumstances, but he will be here, or I will be there, he says, before 10:45 a.m., time certain. Please read the reason for my delay into the record. And so with that, we'll start with the pledge allegiance and the invocation, if we could all please stand.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I thought we could do a moment of silence here and think about, in Hillsborough County, we've experienced, due to this COVID tragedy that has wrecked through our communities for the last 18 months or so, we now have 2,761 deaths in Hillsborough County alone. That's 2,761 people who have lost their family members, their friends or loved ones, their coworkers. And if we could keep all of them, all of them, in our prayers, with us today, and just remember what we've lost here as well, there's been 500, or I'm sorry, 55,600 deaths in the state of Florida, 720,000 nationwide. So let's keep them all in our prayers and thoughts, and their families, and their loved ones, and their coworkers. Thank you.
And with that, we will move to our first proclamation this morning. Our proclamation is presented by Commissioner Ken Hagan on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor to once again present this proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Our victim counselor, Jennifer Kaufman, from the State Attorney's Office, and to Neil Misslicky from the Spring of Tampa Bay, present with us.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Well, welcome, everyone. Domestic violence affects all people regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or ethnicity. The ramifications are widespread. According to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, on average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States. This equates to more than 10 million victims a year. But progress is being made. In particular, in Hillsborough County, Domestic Violence Task Force and all its partners have made significant inroads by raising awareness about this terrible issue. Their tireless work includes educational efforts on preventative measures to eliminate domestic violence in our communities and providing shelter, counseling, legal protections, and other life-saving services. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, it's a privilege to declare October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Hillsborough County. I'm going to read the proclamation. It reads, "Whereas domestic violence is a crime that threatens the safety of thousands of individuals through behaviors that establish power and control, and whereas any person can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion; and whereas domestic violence traumatizes victims, harms families, threatens communities, and increases the likelihood that children who are subjected to it will grow up and inflict violence on others, creating a cycle of violence that must be stopped; and whereas victims need help finding the compassion, resources, and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be punished to the fullest extent of the law; and whereas Hillsborough County facilitates efforts to help victims of domestic violence obtain a wide range of social and legal services; and whereas powerful partnerships between state and local agencies, nonprofit and private organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the courts, health care and legal providers, faith-based communities, and education institutions are creating a coordinated community response to domestic violence; and whereas the Hillsborough County Domestic Violence Task Force and all its partners are committed to raising public awareness about how to prevent, recognize, and stop domestic violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, is hereby declare October 21 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents to learn about and work together to end domestic violence. Executed the 6th day of October 2021, signed by all seven of the Board of County Commissioners." Thank you for all that you, your respective organizations, and the Domestic Violence Task Force do for victims in the community. Would you two like to say a few words? Ms. Kaufman, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan, and thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for allowing me the opportunity to speak this morning. The Hillsborough County Domestic Violence Task Force wouldn't be able to do the remarkable work that we do without our community partners. First and foremost, I want to thank them for their time and faculty on this very important cause. I also want to thank our State Attorney, Andrew Warren, and my Director, Curtis Baughman, for graciously, not only participating in the task force, but to co-chair with Ms. Misslicky. At this point, I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners, and especially Commissioner Hagan and the County's Office for their continued support and sponsoring this proclamation and helping awareness to this very prevalent and alarming concern of the community. As Commissioner Hagan mentioned, domestic violence is a much generally a topic of concern. It's become especially prevalent during this pandemic, the limitations placed on our community that's affected their access to resources. We truly appreciate the support of the community in our efforts to combat and prevent domestic violence. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Misslicky, I think you're muted. Can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry about that. I froze up for a minute there. So I just want to echo what Jen said. Thank you for this highlight and opportunity to speak to this vital issue. Thanks to the Board of County Commissioners' support, work of staff of the county's Criminal Justice Office, and members of our Domestic Violence Task Force. Over the past couple of years, we have been able to initiate a coordinated community response to domestic violence here in our county. Our task force consists of approximately 45 system and agency partners. This group has worked on six identified overarching goals to improve our system's response. We've made great headway together, including training over 5,000 community partners, system partners, and first responders, convened focus groups on key initiatives, including generating improvements to our circuit's no-contact order in order to provide better victim safety and offender accountability. We are delighted the Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women has extended our grant for another year this last month, and we look forward to continuing efforts on strengthening our local response to domestic violence. Thank you all again for your ongoing support and for spreading this awareness.
And again, I just want to say thank you very much for your tireless efforts to end domestic violence in our community. Your work is truly appreciated. Thank you. Madam Chair?
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to our next proclamation presented by Commissioner Kimberly Overman. Commissioner Overman?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. Our Ms. Maria Viscara from Advent Health, West Florida Division, and Jim Cote from Bay Care Health System here today. Are they here?
Yes, hello.
Excellent, excellent.
Yes, thank you.
Well, welcome, and thank you so much for joining us this morning. According to the National Breast Cancer Foundation, in 2021, over 280,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer, as well as over 49,000 new cases of non-invasive breast cancer, will be diagnosed in women in the United States. The good news is that courtesy of new treatments and therapies, as well as early detection that includes scheduling regular breast exams and mammograms, death rates from breast cancer have been declining for over 30 years. Organizations like Bay Care and Advent Health are instrumental in providing the best resources available for breast cancer detection and treatment. Our hearts, thoughts, and prayers go out to all the families dealing with breast cancer, including the DeSantis family, as our First Lady, Casey DeSantis, was recently diagnosed with breast cancer. Every year, the Board of County Commission recognizes October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And in honor of this occasion, I want to present to Ms. Viscara and Mr. Cote this proclamation which recognizes their work and dedication to our community's health. It reads, "Whereas according to the National Breast Cancer Foundation, one in eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime; and whereas in 2021, nearly 2,700 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in the U.S., and approximately 530 will lose their battle with this disease. And whereas according to the University of Miami School of Medicine's Florida Cancer Data System, Hillsborough County had the 10th highest annual incidence breast cancer among women in Florida in 2018. And whereas researchers across the world are continuing to develop new imaging tests, treatments, and other procedures to find better ways to prevent, detect, and treat breast cancer and improve the quality of life of patients and their survivors. And whereas since 1990, death rates from breast cancer have been declining, in part due to improved screening and early detection, increased awareness, and improved treatment options such as surgery, radiation, hormone therapy, chemotherapy, and targeted therapies. And whereas according to the American Cancer Society, when breast cancer is detected early and is in the localized stage, the five-year survival rate is 99%. And whereas in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Hillsborough County partners with area providers, including Bay Care and its VIP mammogram days event, and Advent Health's mobile mammogram bus tour," which, by the way, I saw parked up front, yay, "and to provide 3D mammogram exams to employees and their families throughout the county in an ongoing effort to increase quality of life and raise awareness of breast cancer. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Hillsborough County, and urges all women and men to be screened for the disease, and encourages everyone to learn more about breast cancer risk factors during the month of October. Executed the 6th day of October 2021." And with that, I'd like to invite Ms. Viscara to actually say a few words, and I'll invite Mr. Cote to say a few words afterwards. Ms. Viscara?
Thank you. Good morning. Commissioner Overman, Chairwoman Kemp, and members of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, thank you for taking this moment in time to recognize Advent Health. Breast cancer awareness is something that I am deeply passionate about. As a mammographer for many years, I have been with women of all ages in difficult moments as they have received life-altering news that can be difficult for them to process. And this is why early detection is key and why we want to help people live their healthiest life possible, which is why Advent Health is committed to providing convenient access to screening such as mammography. With technology and expertise, I am so proud to work for an organization that aligns with the mission to save as many people as possible by investing in resources such as mobile mammography. We partner with many organizations to make it easy and accessible for everyone to get routine care, and that is what is vital to keeping us all healthy. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Cote, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, good morning. My name is Jim Cote, Senior Vice President for Ambulatory Services at Bay Care Health System. And thank you, Commissioner Overman, for presenting Bay Care with the proclamation on breast cancer awareness. I am honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of Bay Care. As a leading healthcare system in the region, Bay Care has made tremendous efforts in educating the community about mammograms and early screening. We've helped provide easy access to mammography services through imaging locations and other services across Tampa Bay, offering appointments seven days a week and evenings. We utilize the latest technology, including 3D mammography, to better detect signs of breast cancer. Our goal is to make this service easily accessible for the community, more convenient, and a better experience overall. In collaboration with Hillsborough County Government, we recently designed a mammography VIP program for county employees, as you mentioned, and this program helped provide employees and their spouses first access to annual mammography appointments and 100% coverage for the service. As Breast Cancer Awareness Month begins, Bay Care just launched the annual In Our Hands campaign on October 1st, and this year, the health system will share stories of strength from women who have been affected by breast cancer. The campaign allows women to take control of their breast health and schedule a screening mammogram. As you mentioned, early detection is key to treating the disease and having a more successful outcome. And to learn more about that campaign, you can visit inourhands.org. We want to thank you all for supporting these efforts, and we're proud to continue this work and help serve this beloved community. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir, and thank you both for your words. I just want to reach out to all of those women and men that have had the diagnosis and encourage them to recognize that we've done a great deal of work here, and if you haven't been diagnosed yet, and I've had a lot of it in our families, it's a pretty scary day. But the good news is there's light at the tunnel, and early screening is important. So if you haven't had your mammogram this year, let's make sure you get out there and get that done. And with that, Chair, the floor is yours.
I seem to be having some difficulty. My mic doesn't seem to be coming on. Oh, there, it did suddenly. I wasn't even touching it. So maybe I was getting cut off. So thank you, Commissioner Overman. And with that, we'll move to our next and final proclamation with Commissioner Gwen Myers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Is Dr. Tom Massey, the Chair of the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee, here today?
Yes, I am.
Thank you and welcome. Bullying is a serious problem within our schools and community. With nearly 20% of students being bullied each year, because of this growing concern, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners created an Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee. Its mission is to develop a comprehensive strategy to address bullying in our county. Dr. Tom Massey has chaired this committee since its founding in 2009. Today, we present him and his fellow committee members a proclamation in recognition of their efforts. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, written, or emotional harm, or intimidation intentionally and malicious directed at persons or group of people. Whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, and schools, and increasingly include cyberbullying, which occurs online through social media, mobile devices, and other technology. And whereas cyberbullying is a persuasive threat where messages and images are posted anonymously, distributed quickly, and are difficult to delete or remove once posted. And whereas the National Center for Education Statistics indicate one out of every five students report being bullied, and published research shows the percentage of individuals who have experienced cyberbullying at some point in their lifetime has more than doubled from 18% to 37% from 2007 to 2019. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control indicates students who experience bullying are at increased risk of suffering depression, anxiety, sleep difficulty, low academic achievement, and dropping out of school. And whereas the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners established the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee, compromise of law enforcement, social workers, caretakers, Hillsborough County School District, University of South Florida, Children's Services Organization, and other stakeholders who collaborate on initiatives to eliminate bullying. And whereas the committee has championed numerous countywide bullying prevention efforts, including the Bully Buster Program, the Ovea's Bullying Prevention Program, 15 Students Against Violence Everywhere School Base Club, and the county's annual Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. And whereas the committee additionally collaborates with the Innovative Theater to support community anti-bullying lunch and learns and talkback session, partners with the C.E. Mendez Foundation to develop and distribute parents' cyberbullying awareness training, and continue to partner to explore appropriate platforms to educate the community and support the county's youth. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 2021 as Bullying Prevention Month in Hillsborough County, and urge all residents to make communities safer for young people by taking a stand against bullying. Executed the 6th day of October 2021. Dr. Massey, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Just real quickly, I do have the proclamation, so I'd like to hold that up real quickly for everybody. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Myers and all the other Board of County Commissioners. As I believe everybody knows, bullying and cyberbullying do pose a serious risk to children and adolescents in Hillsborough County. And quite honestly, I don't believe we could address this serious issue without the support of the Board of County Commissioners, so I would certainly like to make sure everybody's aware of that. The committee strives hard, and I'm very pleased to accept this recognition, this proclamation on behalf of the committee. And I think I'd also want to make sure that we recognize our community partners, Mr. Ewing and Mr. Matthews, who have supported our efforts through funding some recognitions. And I think those are next on the agenda, and I would like to cede my time so we can go on and do what's really nice, recognize the young people who have contributed to anti-bullying in the community.
Thank you, Dr. Massey, for all your hard work, as well as the committee, too. Next, it is my pleasure to honor two young people who have been instrumental in helping address and reduce bullying in our community. This year, we are recognizing a recent high school graduate as our 2021 Anti-Bullying Recognition Award winner, and a high school senior as our 2021 Lead By Example Award winner. And now it's time to present the first award. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners would like to recognize this year's Anti-Bullying Recognition Award winner, Natalie Neseiha. Natalie is now 18 years old and a freshman at Florida Atlantic University. Her mother, Jo Dee Neseiha, nominated her for this award. Natalie and her mother here today?
Hi, yes, good morning.
Thank you.
Good morning and thank you. During the 2021 school year, Natalie was a student council president for her senior class at Leonard High School. She was concerned that bullying was creating anxiety among her peers. To help solve this issue, Natalie created the Start With Hello Sandy Hook Promise Program, which focuses on building socially inclusive learning environments for all students. Natalie also increased the effectiveness of her efforts through Bent Not Broken, a peer support program from the nonprofit Success For Kids and Family. We could not be prouder of her accomplishments. It is an honor to present her with the 2021 Annual Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. Congratulations. Natalie, would you or your mother would like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. I'm very happy to be awarded with this honor. Bullying is an issue in my community as well as surrounding counties. I was bullied throughout my elementary and middle school years, so when I was put in a place of decision-making as president of my senior class council, it gave me motivation to do something for the better good. I was taught about inclusion and sisterhood in girl scouting and on my volleyball team, so I was able to turn my knowledge into ways to teach my classmates about the stigma and harm that comes with bullying. In the end, I really wanted to accomplish getting the school to understand that being themselves no matter what is the most important thing. Thank you again for this honor.
Okay, don't go nowhere, young lady. Thank you. I would like to ask Elaja Hewing from Ameriprise Financial Services to present a special gift to you. He is the sponsor of the Annual Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. Mr. Hewing?
Thank you. My name's Elaja Hewing. I'm a private wealth advisor and founding partner at Winward Wealth Management, part of Ameriprise Financial. I wanted to just take a second to thank Commissioner Myers, the Board of County Commissioners, and the Hillsborough County Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee for really allowing me to honor sponsoring this award since its inception. And then also specifically to Dr. Jeanne Willsey for getting me involved in the first place. Thank you for that. We come into work every day at Winward Wealth Management trying to secure people's dreams and goals, financial independence, sending kids to school. Seems difficult lots of times, honestly, armed with spreadsheets and investment markets and a giant tax code, but to be honest, the math is really easy relatively speaking. The really hard work is being done by people like Natalie who are trying to better the life of everyone around them. In reading Natalie's story, I thought a couple of things were really key, is just the general level of just self-motivation, an increased sense of awareness for what's been happening around her, and just wanting to be a voice for those who can't speak, striving to do what's right, not just what's easy. Now, there's no act too small, no words are too inconsequential, no telling how the smallest action we take today could grow in the future. So continue to live your life in pursuit of your goals and being a bright light for the next generation to follow. Congratulations, Natalie, winner this year. We wish you the best of luck in college and all your future endeavors.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hewing. I must add some humor into this. Just want to know if you have any relationship with J.R. Hewing, used to be on Dallas. You don't have to answer, I'm just joking.
Been working on that connection for years, honestly, no luck yet.
Thank you so much. Next, the Board would like to recognize Eli Bainbridge as the winner of the Anti-Bullying Lead By Example Award. Eli was nominated by his school counselor, Ms. Shanine Shaqenskowsky. Are Eli and his parents here today?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Eli is an 18-year-old senior at Peppin's Academy, Riverview, and he is well-known for standing up to bullies. A dedicated Eagle Scout, he has worked with leadership of the National Honor Society to make sure that his school is a safe place for all students regardless of ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, and learning abilities. Examples of Eli's leadership include helping his counselor and other National Honor Society students plan for his school's mental health walkathon last year, working to prevent bullying of students who identify themselves as a part of the LGBTQ community, and advocating for friends who uses a wheelchair and ensuring he has access to all activities. We could not be proud of what he stands for. It is a pleasure to present him the Hillsborough County Anti-Bullying Lead By Example Award. Congratulations. Eli, would you or your parents would like to have a few words?
Yeah, I'd like to say something real quick, if that's okay. All right. I'm gonna tuck myself in here. Hi. I'm Mr. Harst, I'm Mr. Michael Harst. I just wanted to plug in and say a few words about Eli, because I've known him since he was in seventh grade. He was one of my first students. I just read the award, really beautiful award. These three statements- These three statements on here really encompass what Eli Bainbridge brings to the school. It's be you, be brave, and be heard. And the biggest weapon that we have against bullying is leadership, and Eli encompasses all of that. Just wanted to come in and say a few words about him, and let everybody know that bullying is very real, is something that a lot of students know, that we have to witness it or we are part of it somehow, whether we are the victim or the person who is bullying. If students like Eli are out there to try and stop this threat from going across the school, and if more people like Eli, we can have one of the greatest weapons that we have against bullying. So, thank you. Thank you for choosing Eli. I'm gonna let him say a few words now. First off, I wanted to thank all of you for being here today. I know you guys got really busy schedules and everything. And also, it means a lot to be honored with this award. I've always felt strongly that bullying is wrong, and we need to defend those who can't defend themselves. I believe that we can all make this world, we can make this place a better world if we show more kindness and a little bit more concern towards each other for the way that we are. Thank you again.
Thank you, and to all. Thank you for making sure that bullying is a part of our school and that you all do not allow any of the students to be bullied. Hillsborough County is very proud that the leadership that you show at a very young age. Now, Madam Chair, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers, and thank you to everyone.
Excuse me, Commissioner Myers, if I could just, Mark Matthews here, I sponsored the award for Eli, if I could just say a word?
At this time, thank you. I would like to ask Mark Matthews from Matthews Injury Law to present a special gift to you, to Eli. He is the sponsor of the Anti-Bullying Lead by Example Award. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. And Commissioner Hagan, I couldn't help but notice that this is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Hillsborough County, and I took note of some of your comments that you made about the domestic violence affects everyone in our community regardless of age, race, socioeconomic status, religion, or sexual orientation. And a lot of that affects people who are being bullied as well. And there are some synergies here to what we're trying to fight against in our community, both, you know, adults and students trying to fight against bullying. Something that I took note of in Eli's write-up that I got before this started was that, and Mr. Scott hit on it perfectly, was that when Eli speaks out against injustice, other students follow. And that's something that we need in our community, our leaders who are willing to not only do what is right for themselves, but to do what's right for others. Eli, you should have received a letter from me with a $500 check as a congratulations for winning this award. And part of that letter, I just wanted to, I wanted to reference today and some comments that I wanted to make here. One of the reasons that I got involved in sponsoring this award was because a young mom came to me after her young daughter was being bullied at a private school because of the color of her skin and her socioeconomic status, to the point that she had to go to the emergency room several times because she was suffering from panic attacks and seizures from the bullying. And you and I both know that this is not right, but there's a lot of people who would not be willing to stand up to that kind of bullying. I did, and we were able to reach a positive resolution for the young mom and the family, and she's doing great now because of what we were able to accomplish for her. And I know that you were in my shoes, you would have done the same thing. I just ask you, Eli, to please continue to stand up for what's right, please continue to ensure that injustice is called out, and please continue to ensure that injustice in any way is rectified to the best of your ability. You'll face many challenges and obstacles in your life. Be sure to always look out, not only for yourself, but for the people around you, especially when they don't have the ability to stand up for themselves. And that's exactly what you exemplify, and we congratulate you again on this award. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Myers, for that. And with that, we are finished with the awards and proclamations this morning. Thank you to everyone who was recognized this morning and for the work that they do in this community to make this Hillsborough County a better place to live. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to Ms. Wise with changes to the agenda.
Thank you. We have one item that is removed from consent by Commissioner White, item A25, due to a conflict. This is to approve the sixth modification to the agreement with Suncoast Community Health Centers. Our time-certain items, at 10:00 a.m., at item D1 is to conduct a public hearing to consider the ordinance which repeals Hillsborough County Ordinance 8839 and dissolves the Brandon Groves North Special Dependent Tax District. Item D2 is to conduct a public hearing and accept the recommendation of the hearing officer and the Emergency Medical Planning Council and approve a new advanced life support certificate of public convenience and necessity for the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay to operate three permitted ALS vehicles. Item G1 at 10:15 is to receive a report on local pandemic-related data, recovery programs, and strategic investments related to COVID-19. Item F3 at 10:45, Commissioner White's item, to receive a report from John Green, M.D., FACP regarding public policy initiatives related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And at 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. And do we have a motion?
Move the changes, but also recognize that the first items in Affordable Housing are pretty awesome, so go read them on the consent. Second.
And Madam Chair, I'm in the queue to speak.
You're recognized, Commissioner White.
Okay. I just wanted to state for the record that I pulled A25 for the purposes of abstaining, so if you're so inclined, Madam Chair, to just call for the vote on A25 immediately after the rest of the consent agenda, I'd be fine with that. And while I have the floor, I'll just state that I'm abstaining to avoid any potential conflict of interest. And I always like to add to the record that I'm retained by Suncoast as a frontline pharmacist and do not play a decision-making role with the organization.
Thank you. And with that, we have a motion to approve changes to the agenda made by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioners Smith and Myers, and seeing no further discussion, can we do a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. And moving right along to public comments.
So I need to make the motion to approve item A25?
No, that's after consent.
It's after consent?
Madam Chair, I don't think they called.
I don't think they called your name either, because I heard six-zero.
I'm sorry, Commissioner White?
Yes.
Thank you. I thought for a second, I was...
My apologies about that.
That's okay. Thank you. And so with that, we'll move to public comments, and we'll do the consent after. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it's requested at the same time, when you address the Board, that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between Board members and the public. The Board set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting may do so by completing an online public comment form found at hcfl.gov.net/speakup. The form is open for a public sign-up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting. An option is available to notify whether comments will be provided virtually or in person at the meeting. Additionally, in-person speakers will be able to sign, will be able to sign up onsite via kiosk or smartphone the day of the meeting. For participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the online form, an audio call-in number will be provided to you after the form is received by the county. All speakers will be required to provide their name, email address, telephone number in the online form. This information's being requested to facilitate the public comment process. Sign-ups for both virtual and in-person speaking opportunities for public hearings and public comments close at 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. The Chair will call in speakers by name in order in which their requests have been received. Prioritizations on a first-come, first-served basis, the boardroom and the multipurpose room are designated for speakers only. Those who come to county center to watch the meeting and not speak will be accommodated in the lobby area. Only the first 12 in-person sign-ups will be allowed in the boardroom for public comment. Anyone speaking in the boardroom must wear a mask. The multipurpose room will be available for those residents who signed up to speak after the first 12 people have registered, or for those who cannot wear a mask due to a medical condition. Speakers are asked to leave the board or multipurpose room after sharing their comments with the board. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. And with that, we will move first, virtually, to Jason Kimball.
Morning, Madam Chair. Jason has not signed in.
Okay. We'll move to the next speaker, Paige Drummond.
My name is Paige Drummond, and I'm here again requesting a comptroller audit to evaluate animal control policy and procedures. I've spoken at this meeting several times over the past year, and I've told the story of our fatal dog attack in others' communities, you know, twice a month since spring, and I re-crowd our trauma to others who attempt to spare, everyone else the same pain. But I've spent a lot of my time with these public comments, talking at you, and I'd love to have the chance to speak with you right now. So I have a few questions, and I'd love to hear your answers. Do you think it's appropriate that on October 17, 2017, Officer Swanson falsely told a victim that they could not issue a citation to the bite dog because the attack that left his dog's meeting eight to 10 stitches occurred in a public dog park? Maybe this could be easier. Do you think it's appropriate that Animal Control's online reporting submission form has not worked for at least a year? Do you think it's appropriate that in June 2021, Animal Control Division Director Roger Mills told us that an injury requiring stitches and anesthesia did not qualify as severe injury, although the state statute does? Do you think it's appropriate that officers who are found guilty in a 2020 federal civil suit for falsely tying animal control records from 2014 are still employed by the department? Do you think it's appropriate that animal control officers have suggested to victims to shoot attacking dogs even though there's no Florida law that explicitly allows this opening victims up to potential liability? I didn't expect you to respond, since I've reached out multiple times via email with no response. So instead, I hope you'll think about these questions and ask yourselves how you expect the community to trust that this board is operating a functional, transparent government under these types of circumstances. So again, I'm insisting that a comptroller audit is conducted to evaluate animal control policy and procedure, and finally begin a road to accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to the next speaker, Ashley Ryan.
Hey there, good morning. I'm just here to kind of get some clarification on the continued seven-day extension of the state of emergency Hillsborough County has been in. I've been trying to call and get some information on how that's decided, and by whom. Can anyone tell me where I can find the literature regarding how you come up with those decisions?
Commissioner White?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the county administrator, or the county attorney, if you would get your staff with this citizen and let them know about this. I'd sure appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. We will follow up with you and provide that information.
Okay, would I be able to get that today before I leave?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And also, I just wanted to point out, I know you guys had some, you know, time to dedicate to breast cancer awareness and to bullying, and, you know, I fully am very concerned with the understanding of the geoengineering, some call it chemtrails, but every day I wake up and the skies are outlined with white chemicals by planes, and they seem to increase throughout the day. I have just as much concern for breast cancer awareness and any cancer. I think that would be something helpful to acknowledge that would keep people healthy and, you know, maybe help prevent people from getting more cancer, as well as the fluoride that we're adding to the water here in Tampa. It's very discouraging. I don't understand why we are doing that, so I just wanted to really point those things out. As far as the health policies go, it doesn't really make sense that we are, you know, investing into all sorts of medical things, but yet, to some degree, seems that we're poisoning the community with the geoengineering and the chemtrails, 5G, and the fluoride in the water. It's poisoning our food, hurting animals, children, it's blocking the sunlight. Doesn't really make a lot of sense for people who are concerned with breast cancer awareness and any kind of cancer or health, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Burton?
October the 6th, 1917, it is a very important day for those of us in the civil rights movement, activism, born that day with Sister Fanny Luhama. And anyone that knows that sister's story know not only was she a champion for voting rights, but also civil rights, human rights, decency in housing. As the chairperson of the NAACP local branch, I come to offer great support around the continual support and funding of the Hope Affordable Housing Act. As you know, housing is of serious need, not only in the county, but throughout the nation as a whole. In the city, unfortunately, we are experiencing severe gentrification. Many working-class families are being outpriced in terms of what is affordable, even in some of the most blighted communities. In East Tampa in particular, a recent listing on 30th Street, 5103, on a rehab house cost about $449,000. And so, we're now having a better understanding of how the market can say one thing, but the leadership can do other things. So again, we are in support of your work around this need of housing for first-time home ownership, as well as those that still need a rental property. We are very delighted that the national president of the NAACP will be in the city of Tampa on October the 15th, along with this executive board. And one thing that we plan on really laying out for our national president is the way with gentrification, it's going to have a direct impact on not only destabilizing families inside of our communities, but also voting. So again, thank you towards your efforts, and the director of housing for the county in moving forward in providing housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're concluding public comments, and we'll move now to our consent item.
Move all consent items except A25.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioners Overman and Myers. And can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
And would you like to, or would someone like to move A25 separately?
Move A25.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Myers, to move A25. And if we could have a roll call vote?
Chair Kim?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Commissioner White abstained.
Yeah, okay. She captured that I'm abstaining. Thank you.
Have that taken care of. Okay. Okay. We're gonna move now to our regular agenda. Ms. Wise.
Yes, thank you. And we have some time before 10 o'clock, so if we could move to item B1. This is to approve and execute the first modification to the professional services agreement for the Big Bend Road Widening Project, and John Lyons will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Lyons, Public Works. Commissioners, we're asking you to approve and execute the first modification to the professional services agreement with WPSP USA Incorporated for the Big Bend Road Widening Project in two segments, US 41 to Covington Garden and Simmons Loop to US 301. The PDNE and Design Services to append the scope of service to increase the contract amount by $4,528,970 from $2 million to $6.5 million. The original project award was solely for the project development environmental study, and it was noted in that item that a future board approval would be needed for the design phase of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I really have comments and not so much questions. This is big for South County. Commissioner Cohen, this is big for your district, big for my district. Commissioner Smith, I know you're countywide, but you live in South County, so you get it. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge a lot of the hard work that former Commissioner Sandy Merman has put into this. I put some work into it as well. I worked with a group of physicians and some of the leadership at St. Joseph's South some time ago. They sent a letter to FDOT, and it had dozens, if not hundreds, of signatures from physicians and leaders at the hospital. The situation at Big Bend and I-75 has risen to the point of being a public safety issue from a medical perspective, and that's why these physicians sent in this letter. You know, you have cardiologists that are trying to get to the hospital to do emergency stents and various procedures and whatnot, and just can't get to the hospital when they get to the interstate exit. So I'm convinced that that letter had a profound impact. I guess I should say that we're doing this widening, we're partnering with FDOT so that we can coordinate some changes to the interstate interchanges as well. So it's all gonna come in for a landing at the same time. But this is big for South County. Just wanted to put those comments on the record. Ms. Wise, thank you and your staff for your hard work on this. I'm glad to see that it's finally coming to fruition. And with that being said, I'll gladly move approval of the item.
We have a motion by Commissioner White. I think I heard a second by Commissioner Smith. I'm not sure of anyone else. I heard Commissioner Cullen. And we have several speakers. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I completely agree, couldn't agree more with everything that Commissioner White said, and the appreciation for our county staff in finally being able to bring this in for a landing, but by, or at least heading for a landing in something like 2024. I too spoke with the leadership of the South St. Joseph's Hospital recently, and they were as panicked, as concerned about this stretch of Big Bend Road delaying doctors and nurses from their appointments as they were almost about the ER situation, which was equally concerning to them. I mean, this has been a more than a congestion problem, and has helped us all to realize the importance of traffic congestion to quality-of-life businesses and people, you know, getting to their jobs and getting medical treatment. But this is just one of the roads. This is one of the worst, but after this will be Gibsonton Drive, Rodine Drive. We are doing similar improvements in the north part of the county. Van Dyke Road comes to mind. And I always like to take these opportunities of, you know, when we're putting these packages together to really understand the costs and to help the public understand the cost. This, the total estimated project cost for addressing, widening Big Bend Road from four lanes to six lanes over three miles, from 41 to 301, including the interchange. The total cost for that is 100, over $120 million. Over $120 million for fixing a one-three-mile-long bottleneck. And we are very fortunate that our county staff was able to work with other state and federal grant agencies to pull in some of that money. But it's a good moment as we're bringing these projects before the board to have everybody, including the public, understand the cost of road widening mile by mile. So $120.5 million for the three-mile stretch of Big Bend Road is why these things don't happen maybe as fast as the public would like to see them happen. It costs an awful lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cullen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And I'll be brief. I just want to really piggyback on what Commissioner White and Commissioner Smith just said. You know, I was traveling this weekend, and, you know, when you're traveling, sometimes you Google and look things up as you're moving along, and I realized as I was driving through New England, Hillsborough County has more people in it than the state of Maine, it has more people in it than the state of New Hampshire, and it has more people in it than the state of Vermont. This is probably the worst stretch of roadway traffic-wise in the entire county. It is not a stretch to say that this is actually, probably nationally, a just a major artery that is in need of repair. And so I am really thrilled that we're able to finally get this work done. I do want to echo what Commissioner White said and thank the former Commissioners that worked on this, because this has been a long time coming, and it's required an awful lot of coordination between our staff and FDOT. And to everyone that's worked to make this happen, it's gonna mean a huge improvement in the lives of literally tens of thousands of people every single day. And $120 million is a lot of money, but my sense is that this is very, very well-spent money. This is money that is going to really be transformative. So I'm really very happy to be in support of this motion, and I hope that, I hope I'm here to see many of these types of projects in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, I'll just say, you know, I've been on the commission for a few years now, and one of the things that struck me some years ago was when I was visited by St. Joe's physicians and others. But there was one doctor who told me that he had been going south on 301. He had, he was a cardiologist, and he was called in for emergency surgery and to tend to a patient. He was going south on 301, hit total utter absolute gridlock, and couldn't figure out what he was going to do to get to the hospital, which was still about a mile away. So he parked at the Walmart, not knowing if his car might be towed or not, and he was a runner. So he ran to the hospital and for the final mile and made it, he believes, faster than he could have ever gotten there driving. And that stood out to me as being a, I know when I'm down there that it's a terrible problem, especially when I'm down there during hard times. But I will say, I am, I'm very pleased, Commissioner Smith. I think it's really important for people to understand the costs that are involved here. And one thing is, I really think it got quite this bad and delayed this long because of poor planning in the past, as well as the low-impact fees that did not pay for the project sooner. It would have been had not there been that issue. And that as well is one of the things that has delayed and caused this to be so bad. And I just think it's worth recognizing and noting, as you stated, Commissioner Smith, $40 million a mile. That's what that particular project is costing. I-275, changes on that generally are coming up at about $120 million a mile. This is very costly, and it's a cost of growth and a cost of, you know, when we have only, you know, cars to rely on to solve these problems. So I also see this as the beginning, not the end. We know that there's multiple, multiple projects going on. So this $120 million, I mean, I hate to say it, but it's just a small drop in the bucket of all the costs that have, that are being expended there. And I'll say too that I see a lot more coming through to break, you know, what is a terrible problem and growing every day, because there's more homes and residents going in that area and needing to use those roads and facilities. So I also am very pleased that, I hope that we will soon have some other choices to be made in that area of the county when it comes to transit, when it comes to a ferry system, and when it comes to different road arrangements. And also, what we've tried very hard to do, which is to look at providing mixed juice there so that there's more trip capture, more job opportunities, and that. So I think that's all part of the mix here, and I don't want to forget that, because this is extraordinarily important and one to be celebrated, and one to thank staff for moving ahead on. But I do think it's really important, as we note this, to also look and acknowledge what got us here and what the challenges are in the future. So with that, I know we have, I don't see anyone else who is going to speak. So we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioners Smith and Cohen, and seeing no further comments, if you could do a roll call vote, please, and we'll include Commissioner White in this one.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We can now move to our first public hearing. This is a public hearing to dissolve the Brandon Groves North Special Dependant Tax District, and Paul Johnston from the county attorney's office will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Johnston, County Attorney's Office. Earlier this year, the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity declared the Brandon Groves North Special Dependant Tax District to be inactive and requested this board to dissolve the district. The board directed the staff to draft the attached ordinance which does dissolve the district and repeals the ordinance that created it. The public hearing has been properly advertised, and a copy of the proposed ordinance has been filed with the clerk of the court for public review. Staff recommends enactment of this ordinance as presented. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and I don't see anyone signed up. We don't seem to be burning with controversy over this issue. So with that, we'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Overman, and seeing no further comments by Commissioners, if we could, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is item D2. This is to conduct a public hearing and accept the recommendations of the hearing officer and the Emergency Medical Planning Council regarding the finding of necessity for the Crisis Center to operate three permitted ALS vehicles. Before Jean Early speaks, I believe Chair Kemp, you have some comments, and the county attorney, Christine Beck, has some comments as well.
Thank you. Well, we will be having a public hearing to make a determination of public convenience and necessity. When considering this matter, this board is performing a quasi-judicial function as such. And before we proceed to public comment, I'd like the county attorney to speak to the board's review of this matter.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Both the Florida statutes and your ordinance on this set out the factors to be considered when determining public convenience and necessity. They are specifically laid out on page two of the hearing officer's report in detail. But the, one point I wanted to make and to note is that, and that the hearing officer also noted in his report, is that letters of support or comments that do not directly go to the issue of public convenience and necessity should not be considered when you're rendering your decision today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And with that, we can turn it over to Jean Early to present this item. This is a public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jean Early, Department Director for Healthcare Services. Under Florida statute--
Excuse me, can we get a little volume?
I'm sorry, please?
A little more volume? Yeah.
I'll try.
There we go.
Is that better?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, thank you. Under Florida statute, any entity providing pre-hospital or interfacility advanced life support ALS services must obtain a certificate of public convenience and necessity, COPCN, from each county in which the entity plans to operate. Here in Hillsborough County, the BOCC has established a process for issuing such COPCNs through a hearing officer and the Emergency Medical Planning Council, known as EMPC. This process is codified in Hillsborough County Court of, excuse me, County Code of Ordinances. The Crisis Center of Tampa, Inc., DBA, are doing business as Transcare Medical Transportation, has made application for a new certificate to retrofit three of its existing basic life support ambulances into advanced life support ambulances for operation in Hillsborough County. Following that established process, the application was referred to the hearing officer to conduct a public hearing and consider the merits of the application in promoting public convenience and necessity. The hearing officer's report and recommendation was then reviewed and considered by the Emergency Medical Planning Council, and the EMPC has provided its own recommendation. Both the hearing officer and the EMPC recommendations have been provided to you. The final step in the application process is for the board to hold its own public hearing, and then make final determination on the application. Pursuant to county code, the board shall take final action affirming, reversing, or modifying the recommendations. The board shall consider only facts presented at the hearing officer's public hearing. If the board determines that new facts have been offered which were not available or were not produced at the time of the hearing officer public hearing, the board may remand the report and recommendations to the hearing officer and set another board public hearing. If the board determines that public convenience and necessity will not be promoted by approval of the application, then the application shall not be approved. If the board finds that public convenience and necessity will be promoted by the approval of the application, then the application shall be approved, subject to any limitations or restrictions reasonably required by the board. The recommendation is to approve a new advanced life support certificate of public convenience and necessity for the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, Inc., doing business as Transcare Medical Transportation, to operate three permitted ALS vehicles in the class of ground and subclasses of interfacility transfer and medical standby within Hillsborough County. The three permitted ALS vehicles shall be retrofitted from existing basing life support vehicles, and the existing BLS COPCN for the Crisis Center shall be modified to reduce the number of BLS permitted vehicles to 20. This item has no financial impact. This is a public hearing, and I believe we have representatives from the Crisis Center and others signed up to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And before that, Commissioner, before we go to public hearing, Commissioner White has a comment or question.
Yes, thank you. Do we have Chief Jones with us?
Chief Jones is available.
Okay. I'd like to just ask Chief Jones a couple of questions. It's my understanding that the four fire chiefs, being from the county and the three municipalities, sit on the EMPC. Just like to get an understanding of how the four fire chiefs voted, and Chief-- Just like to get an understanding of how the four fire chiefs voted and Chief Jones just to ask a little bit about your thought process in casting your vote.
The four fire chiefs were required to support or decline and all four chiefs were opposed to the recommendation. Two of the chiefs spoke in opposition to, and two of them testified in the proceedings.
Okay, I think that answers my questions.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will go to public hearing on this and I'll recognize the first person who signed up, Scott Bender.
My name is Scott Bender. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay and the Vice President overseeing the Transcare Medical Services Transportation Unit that is part of the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. I am here today in support of the ALS COPCN and available for any questions or rebuttals that the Commissioners may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the next speaker now, Clara Reynolds.
I'm Clara Reynolds, President and CEO for the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. First of all, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. The Crisis Center has been a part of our community for fifty years and Transcare, a division of the Crisis Center, provides medical transportation. This board approved us to start that process in nineteen eighty-three by providing Baker Act transports for individuals who were having a psychiatric emergency. That freed up law enforcement from having to do that transportation. Again, in nineteen ninety-four, you permitted us through a, to provide basic life support services, again, to serve our community. Our mission is to ensure that no one in our community has to face crisis alone. And a medical emergency, a psychiatric emergency, are examples of significant crisis that individuals in our community have faced. And over the past thirty-five and twenty-five years respectively, we have transported hundreds of thousands of individuals and patients to area hospitals and psychiatric facilities to find their help, hope, and healing. What these ALS permits will allow us to do is to be able to expand that mission, to address what you all were just speaking of. We've seen an increase in population in our, in our county, an increase in need in our county that was demonstrated in our application. And to your all's point, right now, we only have two private ambulance providers who are responsible for providing transport for one point five million people in our community who might need help. That includes eleven full-service hospitals, nine freestanding ERs, thirty-eight assisted, I'm sorry, nursing homes, and two hundred and sixty-seven assisted living facilities. When there's not service available from those private entities, our public, our fire, our City of Tampa Fire, our Hillsborough County Fire are then required to provide that transportation. What we believe is that we're offering an option, we're offering another set of services, again, at no cost to the county. This is something that we feel will not only expand the mission of the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, but will also serve our community. So I humbly ask that you approve these three permits. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now we will go to Dr. Holt. He's virtual.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Dr. Douglas, Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County. I'm speaking in support of this application, Florida Department of Health. We've had a very close partnership with the Crisis Center across a wide variety of public safety and health issues, mental health, sexual assault, substance abuse, veteran support. Here today, we're talking about Transcare, the basic life support. Their response to COVID and the pandemic related to transport and other services demonstrated that they are very proactive. They offered to contribute, not just respond to requests. So as related to the transport of the medically needed, they have a proven performance and I do support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we'll go to Mr. Jordan Miller.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Jordan Miller. I am Legal Counsel for American Medical Response, who is an existing ALS transport provider in Hillsborough County. I represented AMR at the hearing officer hearing, which took place over two days. And I wanted to bring the board's attention to several aspects of the hearing officer's report that are flawed and go through some of the legal reasons very quickly as to why I believe they're flawed and that you should reject this application. First, the Hillsborough County code places the burden on the applicant to prove public convenience and necessity. It's their burden to prove that there's an unmet need in the service category in which they're applying. And the code also states, well, what does public convenience and necessity really mean? Well, the code states that the hearing officer and the board shall consider the recommendations of the fire chiefs. You've heard today that none of the fire chiefs recommended approval of this application. In fact, the Tampa and Hillsborough Fire Chiefs appeared as witnesses at the hearing officer hearing and testified as to reasons why they did not support this application. And that is something that the board and the hearing officer shall consider. And in fact, the hearing officer, at, at the first day of the hearing, asked the applicant, do you have the support of the fire chiefs? The applicant said no. The hearing officer continued the hearing for a period of several months to give the applicant a chance to obtain these fire chiefs' approval. And the hearing officer said, and this is quoting straight from the transcript, that he would recommend denial of the application if they could not obtain these important and key recommendations. Fast forward several months, we come back to the hearing, the applicant did not obtain these recommendations. And as you heard, the Tampa and Hillsborough Fire Chiefs testified against the application, voted against it at the EMPC. The hearing officer reversed himself, did not recommend denial, and instead recommended approval, going against what he said at the first hearing. We continued the hearing for several months, came back, they couldn't get the recommendations. The hearing officer went ahead and approved it anyways, contrary to the law and contrary to what he said he would do. Now, there's another major issue with the report that I'd like to, to highlight briefly here, and that's the reasoning. The hearing officer stated that he would recommend approval with the stipulation that Transcare provide ALS services for emergency medical transportation. I would, I would say that that is, under the code, that is the purview of the county and Tampa City Fire Chiefs. And that's part of the reason why they did not support this application. The reasoning for the hearing officer's recommendation for approval is flawed, it's contrary to the law. I believe if you asked the fire chiefs who are here attending virtually today, they would say the same thing. And we would request that you deny this application for those reasons and many others.
Thank you. And with that, we will move into board discussion, close the public hearing. We have no one else to speak. We'll move to board discussion. And Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. After reading the document about this particular project, in particular the focus interest on the recommendation from the hearing officer, I move that we approve this item based on the recommendation of the hearing officer and the Emergency Medical Planning Council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioners Smith and Cohen. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And just, just briefly, I, given what we've, we're hearing, I wanted to thank Dr. Holt for, for coming and helping us with this matter today. And I, I, I think it's clear, we have been seeing an increasing need for ambulance service throughout this county. And it's also clear that it's not just because of the recent COVID, but because of growth, because of growth, because of the way growth has, has spread out. And so I, I just want to say we are beyond this, probably going to have to begin looking at our ambulance service, both BLS, ALS, and our fire rescue service, ambulance service as well after this. This is, I just want to take this opportunity to make that comment. Of course, I agree with the maker of the motion that the reasons are clear in the record of the hearing master. But I just want to take that opportunity to say there is a need and a, and a problem that may take multiple steps to address after this. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I do see no further comments by Commissioners. We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioners Smith and Cohen. And seeing no further comments, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item G one. This is to receive a report on the local pandemic-related data recovery programs and strategic investments related to COVID-19. We will turn it over to Division Director Tim Dudley, Emergency Manager, and Dr. Holt.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, Tim Dudley, Officers of Emergency Management, and I'll be giving you an update on COVID operations. Testing here in Hillsborough County, we continue to see a degree, a decrease within the county. The positivity rate at the rapid test site, at county test site averaged about eight point one percent last week. Hillsborough County and the City of Tampa run testing sites, account for around thirty percent of the testing results within the county. On Monday, October fourth, Hillsborough County opened an additional site at Progress Village to serve as a COVID testing and vaccination site. The site will be open from eight to five, Monday through Friday, for residents who want a free COVID test or a Pfizer vaccine dose, one, two, first, second, or third dose. Appointments for vaccine doses can be made at thepatientportalfl.com to schedule vaccines. The testing will be walk-up. Also, the school district received Binax Now at Home Rapid Tests for distribution to families of symptomatic students. OEM logistic team continues to, continues working with the Department of Health to provide Binax Now Rapid Tests to long-term care facilities. Wait times for appointments for COVID testing at local pharmacies has improved. Same-day and next-day appointments are available. Vaccination updates, we continue to see ample vaccine supplies in the community by pharmacy providers and other organizations with access to the vaccine. They are currently administering third doses also. The county vaccine sites that are available right now, Lee Davis and the new Progress Village location. And the antibody treatment, antibody therapy site at King Forest will be closed starting Thursday, October seventh through October eleventh, and it will reopen again October twelfth with its regular daily schedule from nine to five. We are seeing a downward trend in folks seeking this treatment, but we will continue to monitor and make available in partnership with the state. Targeted vaccine areas, TVA's Hillsborough County has partnered with a mobile vendor to complete TVA missions in partnership with the Department of Health. Department of Health completed twenty-four vaccine missions last week. This concludes my updates. Any questions?
And we're going to hear from Dr. Holt now.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. This is Dr. Douglas Holt, Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County. I'll present the Epi Report regarding our COVID pandemic, hospital, healthcare system status, and vaccination status. If I could have my presentation, please? Okay, next slide. Again, just as a reminder, this, these graphs, these two show the course of our pandemic. The top graph looks at that from the beginning, March twentieth, and it shows in the yellow line, the percent positivity we've seen over that period of time. And the red line is the seven-day rolling case count. Below, we've focused our attention really on the last two, the last thirty days. As you can see, we've continued and to see a decreased weekly sustained at about thirty percent of our new cases reported. So we are now at three hundred and fifty-four new cases per day versus one thousand four hundred we were at one month ago. Ninety-six percent of these new cases are in the unvaccinated population. Our percent positivity is now decreased to six point nine versus fourteen percent where we were one month ago. Next slide, please. So just a reminder, this graph allows us to compare the rate of transmission that we're seeing in Hillsborough County to our neighbors, Anales and Pasco, and also with the state. This is the general description of the risk of transmission or the, the amount of transmission. As you can see, the continued decrease, we've all seen this across the board, such that now we are entering what I refer to as the orange zone. We're getting out of the red, the highest level, but this still does represent a significant amount of community-based transmission. Hopefully, if this decrease continues, we can get back to that yellow zone that we were at just prior to July fourth. This is, slide, looks at it by ages. We were very interested in that in the early phases of the, with the school openings and other activities or things that were going on in the summer. What this now shows, that the case rate, which is the number of new infections by age group of one hundred thousand of that population, we see essentially that all the rates have converged and are essentially the same rates or the equal risk that we're seeing across all of the age groups that we were focused on during this period. Next slide, please. This demonstrates the number of emergency room visits for COVID. That's the, the red bars. And the daily admissions, which is the blue bars and, and the black line is our seven-day inpatient admission. So the emergency room visits have continued to decrease significantly. We are now at thirty-five admissions per day across our hospital system versus well over a hundred one month ago. Next slide, please. So that was the, all the good news. Now, it's a little bit of the not-so-good news. This is, reflects the update regarding the number of vaccines of our population that have been vaccinated. The yellow is the number that have been vaccinated. The light gray is those that are unvaccinated but are eligible, and then there's a subset of that that are not eligible. If you look at the total population that have received one dose, we are now at fifty-six point six percent. We were at fifty-three percent a month ago. Focused on the eligible population, we're at sixty-six percent, an increase from sixty-four point five percent. So the decrease in our community-based transmission was really primarily due to a large number of our recently infected with their natural immunity that's been added to those that have our immunity from vaccine. Final slide, next slide, please. So this is just characterizing the vaccination numbers and percentages by age group. No significant change, the longer, younger populations demonstrate a little, a lower percentage of vaccinations. With that, I will stop and be available for any questions.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Dr. Holt and Mr. Dudley for, for your reports and for your hard work in making sure that we are- your hard work in making sure that we are doing everything we can to reduce the impact of COVID in our communities and our families and in our businesses and the way we operate within the county. It's very, very clear from the charts that you showed, whether it be the seven-day average or whether it be the, you know, the number of cases per thousand residents. When you look at the trend of the increase when schools opened and then when they adopted a mask mandate that actually required that students and teachers and personnel within the school system wear a mask, that the number started to decline. So those precautionary measures that we all would like to see, you know, loving your neighbor and actually protecting them and yourselves, has shown very, very good response by seeing the numbers of exposures and number of cases fall significantly and get us into a zone that is less dangerous than the high transmission zone. And it's also good to see that we've seen a significant increase in the number of vaccinations in the 12 to 14 year from the last report. So it's great to see that parents are getting their kids that are in our school systems vaccinated. My question really lies in the issues that occurred yesterday in the school system. Was your office or any physician, to your knowledge, asked to make the presentation of showing that proactive behavior that we've seen within the schools at the hearing yesterday or to the workshops and the meeting yesterday at the school board?
Yes, ma'am. We were not directly involved in the presentation, but we daily and weekly work their team, and they get our information and opinions that way.
Okay, thank you very much. And the reason I ask the question is I think it's really important that we've seen parents go through the exercise of helping their children not share the infection. And as we move into holiday seasons, as we move into, you know, Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas, all the various different holidays that are coming between now and the end of the year, these, many of our children do not have access to the vaccine. And the good news is it sounds like we might have it soon. Have you gotten any details on, or at least projections on when we might have an approval for the children of five to 11 years old as of today? Dr. Holt?
Yes, ma'am. I know it's frustrating, this slow process that has been, that they've been engaged in, the FDA's reviewing of a massive amount of data. I do not have specific predictions. I think I've been saying it's about weeks, but those weeks have turned into months, so I do not know right now.
Thank you. So we don't really know, but it does look like we're getting close to that opportunity. And so I'd just like to say thank you for your hard work in encouraging our citizens, business owners, and our school personnel, as well as parents, in doing everything you can to reduce the transmission of this. And I look forward to having that vaccination for our kids because you can clearly see that the change in behavior that we saw after the mandate was put into place when the school system has resulted in a lower level of exposure and communication and a community spread in our community. And that, at the end of the day, that's what we all would like to see. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. And I do not see any other commissioners. So at this time, we'll, Ms. Wise, well, is the next, is Dr. Green available?
Yes. The next item is item F3. It's Commissioner White's item with Dr. Green, and it does look like Dr. Green is on, so...
Well, we can make a motion to waive at a time certain.
I'll move to waive the rules and take that up now.
Okay. And we have a motion by Commissioner White to waive, seconded, I think, by both Commissioners Overman and Myers. Seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, we'll move to Commissioner White's item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Green approached me to chat about the county's policy regarding mask-wearing in county facilities a few weeks back, and I invited him to speak at today's county commission meeting because I think it's important for this board to hear from a broad array of experts on the topic of COVID policy. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. John Green. Dr. Green, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Dr. Green, you're an MD, correct?
That is correct.
And a fellow of the American College of Physicians?
That is correct.
And what's your medical specialty?
Infectious disease and tropical medicine and hospital epidemiology.
Fantastic. And you are a published, correct?
Yes.
Extensively, as I see it, on your bio.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So, Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Green for his presentation, and I'd like to be recognized at the conclusion of his presentation for some questions.
Of course.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board, and I welcome this opportunity to talk to you. I would like you to know that I trained here at the Medical School of USF and did all my residency fellowship training here, and I've been working at the Moffitt Cancer Center for 30 years, and I'm affiliated with the University of South Florida College of Medicine, and as my colleagues, I have Dr. Holt and all the other colleagues of mine that you respect highly and work with very well. And with that in mind, I would like to give you my presentation. So the main point of what I'd like to say is the Delta virus has changed things dramatically because instead of one person infecting two, the one person can infect five to six people, so it is much more contagious. There are some people who say it's even more deadly and kills more people, but that has not been approved, proven. But it is quite contagious. Next slide, please. So if we had a comparison, you can see that this new Delta variant is quite contagious. It's more contagious than smallpox, the 1918 Spanish Flu, and it is close to chickenpox, which is quite contagious and does not nearly approach measles, but it is definitely a contagious isolate. Next slide. Now, there is no doubt whatsoever that vaccination is heavily promoted by myself as well as my colleagues because it is undeniable that vaccination will reduce by eightfold your chances of illness. It will reduce by 25-fold your risk of being hospitalized. It will reduce by 25-fold the chances of you dying. And the hospitals that are broken down into who's in the ICU on the ventilator, 90-plus percent are in unvaccinated people, so it's undeniable that vaccination is effective. Next slide. Now, the mask that prevents COVID-19 at the greatest is number 14, which is an N95 mask. When that is given to the general public, 60% do not know how to put on a mask correctly, and healthcare workers are trained specifically how to put on and take off a mask. The next best mask is number one, a surgical mask, and then the least best is number 11 and 12, a gator. We allow all these masks to be in our hospital for anybody except healthcare workers taking care of patients have to use number one, and when they do an aerosol generating procedure to take care of COVID, they have to use number 14. Next slide. Now, the problem with masks is that the general public who are not trained in wearing masks have worn it in many different locations other than what it's designed for. So the lower the age, the greater the risk of noncompliance with a correct mask-wearing, which all of these are incorrect, as you all know, and you've seen people with various versions. The most common is number three with the notes out. Next slide. Now, this has made a lot of headway, which is COVID can live on items. It does not live well on metal like copper. It does live on paper, money. A lot of practices that were done were unwarranted because of this truth, which is some people would not take their mail or their boxes unless they wiped them down, totally unnecessary. And a lot of people were concerned that I will carry it on my clothing, and that also is totally unnecessary. So transfer a virus to infect you by touching keyboards, phones, and other doorknobs is one in 10,000. The chances of touching one of these is even highly less. So touching things are unlikely, but hand washing is still a good idea. Next slide. A lot of physicians, the younger physicians more than the older, were concerned about bringing COVID home to their families, and they insisted on wearing scrubs. They would change in the garage and immediately put clothes on and then go into the house with new clothing and wash their clothes immediately. Again, this is totally unscientific and unnecessary. Clothing does not transmit COVID, and this, these are behaviors that have done, have been done irrationally, but we have allowed it to alleviate the fear of the healthcare worker to wear scrubs during this pandemic. Next slide. Testing is a big key. We do heavily testing, thousands and tens of thousands, and highly recommend them for those that are symptomatic and exposed. There are colleges out there with 98% of their people vaccinated, and they're doing testing weekly or twice a week, which is totally unnecessary in asymptomatic population. If you go to school in England, you have to be tested every three days with a swab, and self-testing is recommended by some experts before you have your Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas gathering. Test yourself that morning if you're asymptomatic, and that, in my opinion, is overkill and unnecessary and overtesting. Next slide. Now, this is an outbreak in a cancer center, and it goes to show you that healthcare workers are rarely infected on the job. They're always 99% infected at home in the community, and when they are infected, it's in the left side, which is in a poorly ventilated, small room, crowded area where you cannot social distance, and that's where they can actually be infected, wearing a mask and having a gathering to celebrate a new baby or a new wedding, et cetera. These are key points of high-risk locations and behavior. Next slide. Now, unfortunately, a lot of states have enacted laws because of the reach of public health and how much power public health has. I'm all in favor of public health policies to keep the community safe. The question is, what kind of limitations do they have on personal freedom? When I wear my public health hat, my epidemiologist, I'm all for very strong measures. When I wear my ethics committee hat as the chairman, I am very strong with personal freedom, and I don't agree with mandating things. Next slide. The big problem with a lot of the mandation mandates and the lockdowns and getting people home and quarantining them is that lots of problems have occurred, including myopia and kids looking at screens for long periods of time is on the increase. Anxiety, depression, sleep disorders, aggressive behavior, teenagers. You can see the statistics are all increased because of this pandemic. Next slide. Now, again, other problems include increased substance use and suicide and other disorders have increased because of a lot of the measures that have been mandated. Next slide. Now, this is the key point that makes all my decisions on guiding Moffitt through the COVID epidemic, and that is a significant exposure is a total of 15 minutes, less than six feet for more than a 24-hour period because of droplet spread, mostly highly unusual for long aerosol spread. Because of these reasons, we have come up with some rules at Moffitt where everyone wears a mask in the main building where patients are to make them feel safe, but when we're in our own work area, you don't have to wear a mask because you're walking down the hallway going to the bathroom. If you have a meeting, then you can distance by six feet. You do not need to have a mask. If you're in a cubicle with walls above your head, you do not need a mask. And by doing this, we've given freedom with no increase in outbreaks by doing this measures what is reasonable. Next slide. Now, risk of dying of COVID is estimated at one in 150. You can see the risk of flu and pneumonia is about one in 3,000. The risk of other illnesses and accidents and things of nature are much less likely. So we all make these risk assessments even when we get in our car and drive to work, et cetera, and these are the risks that have to be taken and considered, and as you can see, COVID is a risky concern. Next slide. Now, your age has a lot to do with your risk because if you're over 65, even 55, your risk is getting a little too high for comfort of dying if you catch COVID. If you're in your teens and younger, twenties, your risk of a severe illness, dying, is very low. So you have to take into account the age of the person on making decisions. Next slide. This was from a JAMA article, and I'm getting to the end, so thank you for your patience, is the risk of tolerance and self-determination. And when we decide on risk and what we're willing to take is how much diseases in the community, which was shared today. What is the individual's risk of exposure depending on their behaviors and what things they're doing? And how much can an individual do if exposed to COVID? And that, those are ways to mitigate it. And I want to just mention these points were mentioned in this article, which is some individuals are willing to assume risk but not willing to have their individual freedoms curtailed. Balance the risk to society versus individual rights is important when you make decisions. The issue of individual freedom, the common good, has always been central debate in the United States. What rights and privileges do individuals surrender for the common good is a question? How should individuals balance their rights against their responsibilities, ensure their choices and actions don't impose risk on members of society or family members? And for the foreseeable future, the vast majority of scientists say risk of acquiring COVID may decrease, but it will always be there, and you will have to assess what your risk tolerance is based on that reality. Next slide. So my final recommendation and what we do at Moffitt to balance this idea of freedom, self-determination, and safety is we do not use masks outside with social distancing because the dilution of the air makes transmission highly unlikely. No mask inside work areas when mobile and contact with others short duration, going to the bathroom, walking down the hall, coming in. No, this is in our work area, not in the patient hospital where masks are worn on entrance and kept on the whole time. No mask in well-ventilated rooms with space of six feet or more is sustained. No mask eating and social distancing, and no mask with exercise sports when short periods of close contact are inevitable. And then finally, vaccination undeniably lowers risk of infection, transmission, severe illness, and death, and we hotly recommend it, and the risk of an adverse effect is highly unlikely. And I have encouraged and convinced a number of colleagues to get vaccinated that were hesitant and continue to do so. So that is my presentation, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Dr. Green, thank you so much. That was an excellent presentation. Our initial conversation revolved a lot around mask use and the policy revolving around mask use. So I've jotted down a number of questions that I'd like to ask you one by one. The first would be, given that we've implemented social distancing here in the county commission boardroom, the board members are separated by plexiglass, and we've upgraded the ventilation system. system in the boardroom, do you think masks are necessary at county commission meetings?
My opinion is no. I think the chances of someone infecting someone in those circumstances is higher than one in a million.
Very good. And do you believe that masks are generally necessary in county buildings if people are socially distanced and/or in contact for less than 15 minutes?
No, I do not believe so because I'm very strict with that. Six foot or less, more than 15 minutes without a mask is a significant exposure, and anything else is much less. And when I go to large stores shopping, I do not wear a mask because I cannot meet the definition that I just mentioned.
Very good. Are masks necessary in outdoor settings?
Again, I would say no because of the dilution of the air. The only time it would be maybe wise is if you were crammed together, shoulder, shoulder, and there's no distance between you for long periods of time.
Okay. And do you believe masks are necessary, then, in most situations in county facilities?
Well, I would say most interactions in county facilities do not require a mask, in my opinion.
Very good. And my final two questions revolve around schools. I'll remind the public that this board has no authority over the school district, but there is some recent news revolving around their mask policy over there. And as I understand it from media accounts, they have returned the mask issue to full parental control. With that being said, do you think masks are necessary in most situations in school classrooms if the teacher and students are socially distanced?
I would say no, and I've advised schools accordingly, as well as churches, that if you can maintain that distance in a well-ventilated area, and a mask would not be necessary in those situations.
Got it. And, Dr. Green, for the final question, I'll just remind you, you know, I'm still a parent of school-age children, so I'll remind you that when kids change class, I think they usually have about three minutes to change classes. I probably don't have the exact number of minutes right, but it's a short period. So, with that being said, do you think masks are necessary during the changing of classes in school?
I would say no because they can't meet the definition of an exposure. However, you have to keep in mind, it does say quantitatively over 15 minutes, so you can get into some debate on the duration on five changes over a long period of time. But with most people moving quickly throughout that time, I would say no.
Very good. Dr. Green, thank you so much for your willingness to come and present to this board today. I don't have any ask today. I don't have a motion today. We've been presented with a great deal of information. I'd like for county staff to consider this information and digest this information. I think the same would hold true for the commissioners. Perhaps a couple of weeks from now, at our next board meeting, depending on how the Delta variant numbers are looking, you know, I may make a suggestion at that time that we think about how this information might be useful in setting policy around mask use in county facilities. Dr. Green, thanks again so much for taking time out of your busy schedule today. Before you leave, though, I think the chairwoman's going to tell you that a couple more commissioners are in the queue to ask you some questions or make comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if there's any questions, but Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner White and Dr. Green, for bringing this presentation and the information to us. I have a couple of questions for Dr. Green, because there was some questions that you've asked that I'd like to get a little more clarification on. So, for example, in the boardroom, we sit in this room for three to four hours at a time. And many often times, when individuals want to make public comment, they sit through the prophecations, they sit through, so they are here well in excess of 15 minutes. And so, and we stay in the room. Now, granted, I am very proud of what the county has done to address air ventilation and safety and created the barriers between us. But given that we're in the room for many hours, how would that affect, or how would that address your suggestion that masks are not necessary in the boardroom for either the board members or the public that may sit in the room for hours at a time?
So, we at Moffitt, when we have a board meeting that may last several hours, if you can maintain six feet for hours on end, you don't meet the definition of a exposure, therefore, we would allow it because we believe the risk would be very low for transmission to occur in those situations.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your answer. So, as it pertains to our students, where the school board and the administrator have admitted that there's no way to keep social distancing to a level of six feet with our students, in many cases, they are less than three feet from each other for a full classroom period. How would we find that not wearing a mask in those circumstances, given social distancing has been indicated not possible, also not possible on the school buses? And apparently, if everybody's moving at the same time in the hallways, it's not possible there. How does social distancing play in preventing exposure or increasing community spread in those circumstances, in your opinion?
So, in my opinion, when we first started the pandemic, the CDC said use three feet, and then they changed it to six feet later on. The World Health Organization uses one meter, which is three and a half feet. So, we arbitrarily picked six feet to be extra safe for droplet spread. Now, with that said, we as adults at Moffitt working here sustain our six feet, and therefore, it's not an issue. And I have not addressed when schools cannot sustain six feet distance because of the age and maturity level, then I would follow the rules, just like you said. If it cannot be sustained, then it can't be sustained, and I would act accordingly.
Okay. Thank you. If I understood that to mean you would actually provide the six feet, the protections, the masks, as well as promoting vaccination in those cases. But given that our children in many ages are not eligible for vaccination, what percentage of vaccination exposure do you, or vaccination, what is the word, adoption? Would you feel comfortable that would represent a reduction in community spread and a reduction of the risk of transmission of the Delta virus, given that it has a much higher level of transmittability?
Yes. So, the original virus was estimated at 60% of the population vaccinated would be appropriate to stop the epidemic pandemic. The Delta virus, because of its contagiousness, would take about 90%, they're estimating to be vaccinated, to be protected. And I would say that a lot of hospitals did allow masks to come off when they could assume that the healthcare workers that would be congregating, training doctors, were vaccinated. And that is a true statement, that the vaccination would reduce chances dramatically of getting infected or spreading infection. So, yes, highly recommend that. And I will also point out, the Moffitt van going between buildings, because you cannot socially distance six feet, is masked or worn within the buses or the vans.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here today and answering our questions. I really appreciate the presentation. And Chair?
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Commissioner White, and especially thanks to Dr. Green for taking the time out of what I am sure is a very busy schedule to be here with us today and have a presentation that we can all add to the basis on which we are moving forward with policy decisions in this very, you know, evolving and dynamic situation of the pandemic. I very much appreciate that. I would like to ask a follow-up, kind of on Commissioner Overman's question about the difference between the Delta variant and the original variant of COVID, which you pointed out was, the Delta was quite a lot more contagious than the original variant. And ask, how is, how is the advice that we're, you're giving in Moffitt, how is that different today from the original advice about masking? The calculation of whether or not to mask, depending on social distance and time of exposure and whether the ceiling is low? How is, how is the Delta variant making that calculation different from the original variant?
Yes. So, I would say that when the original variant came and went, we opened up our freedoms at Moffitt, allowing more visitors to come into the building, and also increasing the amount of trainees coming into Moffitt. And when the Delta variant emerged with its new pandemic, we stopped pre-net students from coming into Moffitt. We decided not to get rid of the visitor policy because of the extremely negative impact to the patients and family. But we did reduce it from, say, having three visitors to one or two, depending on where you're at. And we did act on it and did accordingly, but we continue to wear the mask and screening at the doors. Temperature screening was not useful and is not done. So, we did do that with the Delta variant. And then we, as well as other hospitals, instead of waiting for a certain number of having less than 30, 10, 15, 20 cases per 100,000, on when is it safe to start doing more free things? We and other hospitals are now free to travel because we feel like the risk is low enough. So, we have made certain decisions on becoming more free to do things than when we're at our peak, when everything is limited, no travel, and no visitors at one time. So, I think we learned that even with the Delta variant, some things are bad, like visitation, not to get rid of them completely, but to limit them. So, we sort of came up with a balance between good policy, safety, and also freedom and what's best for the individual.
Thank you very much. And, you know, I appreciate your, you know, nuanced explanations of the subtleties of all the facets that have to be taken into consideration on policy decisions in various situations, for example, in your hospital. And we have to consider policy, broad policy, that can apply throughout our county. The school district, as Commissioner White noted, is the body, the school board, and is the body responsible for those decisions within our classrooms and schools. And then, you know, we as individuals can make our own decisions based on all these variables. But it's one thing to make a decision about who should make a mask, wear a mask when, based on how much social distance there is, how much time you're going to be together, how high the ceiling is, how crowded the room is, how wide spread is COVID in your community today. And it's another to make broad policy decisions that everybody can use as a rule of thumb within a certain situation without, you know, we can't be as fine-grained and fine-tuned as those individual decisions. I will say also, it strikes me that in our schools, they have other variables. The air conditioning goes out not infrequently in school buildings, and the ventilation may be different in some pretty crowded classrooms. So, those things need to be taken into consideration, as well as, you know, how much you can count on children remaining socially distanced. I will also just say that, I mean, given the politically-charged discussion even in our own community, and some of the nastiness some of us are exposed to on Facebook regarding these issues, that the science has been evolving. COVID is a brand-spanking-new disease that nobody was exposed to or knew anything about very, until very recently. And at the very beginning, we had no data. We had no data, no science, to base our recommendations on. So, before we had vaccines, before we had the current treatment options that we have today, we were well-advised to be especially careful about touching doorknobs or other measures that we know today, based on the data that we've had are unnecessary. So, my husband is a registered nurse, and he was coming into the house early on in this from having been out in the hospital community, wearing his scrubs. And we had a policy in our house that he took his scrubs off in the laundry room and changed clothes right there before he came in. And that may seem unwarrant, we may understand today that that's unwarranted, but at the time, it was not crazy. It was rational. It was rational based on the way that people were dying. And also, evolving is the local situation. And as Dr. Green pointed out, and our CDC notes in their recommendations, that our policies have changed accordingly. Our county has changed our policies as transmission rates have soared and then dipped and then soared again. So, we're trying to react, and I applaud staff for reacting to these changing conditions and basing our policies on sound science as it has evolved and as the data has come in. So, I do very much appreciate this opportunity to hear from Dr. Green, and it is great for us to hear from a wide range of medical professionals. We have been hearing from a wide range of medical professionals throughout this in our county, from the various hospitals in our county. And just keep in mind that, as Dr. Green noted, some of the points are still controversial, whether or not, in certain situations, the time you take into calculation for wearing a mask is additive over the day. How many times, you know, if students are only in the hallways, if we're only in the hallways here for a minute, that seems like, well, that's not 15 minutes. But if you're in that hallway 15 times, it's 15 minutes. So, how to calculate that is something that, you know, the experts are still discussing and we need to consider as well. So, with that, I'll close, but I do appreciate the opportunity to have these kinds of discussions for our benefit and for the benefit of the public.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And I'll be brief, because I agree with much of, most of, all of what Commissioner Smith just said. Starting with the appreciation to Commissioner White for bringing this forward and to Dr. Green for giving such a measured and thoughtful presentation, I just want to say that I think that the county administrators' policy related to masks in the county facilities has been spot-on. It has evolved and changed as the pandemic. It has evolved and changed as the pandemic has evolved and changed. Before the Delta variant became a problem, we had relaxed our policies. When the Delta variant kicked up, we reinstituted some of them. I have no doubt in the coming weeks that if things continue on the current trajectory, we will make decisions accordingly, and some of those things are very likely to be relaxed, I would think, in the near future. I do want to just mention, though, I do think the elevators in this building do present a challenge. There are, this building, as all of us know, this building was not built to be a government building. And it involves people that come in at very close quarters. If they go up to, say, the tax collector's office when it's under normal business, people are sitting on top of each other in a waiting room for an extended period of time. And we have to take into account those types of situations when making the policy for the entire building. So what might seem excessive on one floor, in fact, has to be the policy to accommodate what's going on on another floor. And I do think that in a public building, you have an added level of responsibility because it really is open to everybody, and everyone can walk in and has a right to walk in without being questioned and without any sort of hindrance or delay. So I guess where I'm going with this is just to say that I have great confidence in both the board and the administration to work through these next few weeks. And I have no doubt that we will find ourselves in this room maskless again in the very near future. And I just want to say, I look forward to that because I do think that masks do take away something from these meetings in the sense that we can't see each other's expressions when we are reacting to the various different things that happen here. And that's a very important part of the deliberative process. So I know that when we all feel comfortable and when the administrator deems that it's safe, which I do assume will be soon, we will go back to a more normal way of doing business. And I appreciate the fact that everybody, regardless of their views on this matter, has shown patience and tolerance as we sort of all move through what has been acknowledged to be a totally unique situation together. So thank you.
Commissioner White?
Thank you for allowing me to come in for a second round, Madam Chair. Commissioner Overman, Commissioner Smith, you brought up excellent points about the schools issue. And I just want to state for the record that I believe wholeheartedly in parental control. Parents have the ability to opt their children in to a mask requirement in the school district. They also have the ability, particularly for older students, to opt them out, but set an expectation that they want their child to maybe mask up on the school bus, but that it's not necessary in outdoor settings or in classrooms where social distancing is possible. So they do have that ability over there. And I just want to reiterate, Commissioner Cohen, I agree with you. You know, I think we're on a trajectory of perhaps being able to go maskless again. So, you know, I just would ask Ms. Wise to consider the fact that the Delta variant numbers are on the decline. I'd like to see where we are in the next couple of weeks. I'd like you to consider the data that we receive every two weeks at our county commission meetings. And I'd like for you to consider what Dr. Green brought forward today and, you know, just let us know where you are in the next couple of weeks.
Commissioner Overman?
Thank you. And I'm right, I'm right there with you in many ways. I think it is important to recognize that change of behavior has also led to the decline in the numbers. And given that Dr. Green mentioned that a 90% vaccination adoption would improve our opportunities of getting to a level where precautions may not necessarily be as necessary as they are now, that we remember that we have, we have done things to make it better, and it's helpful to continue doing so where possible. And Commissioner Cohen, to your point, this past weekend, I went to an outdoor event. There required vaccinations or proof of negative result of a test for everybody that was able to come in. And it was outdoors, so there weren't masks, but there were sunglasses on. And I had realized that I had gotten so used to seeing people's eyes and how they responded, that I didn't know a lot of folks that I would know because I was so used to seeing their eyes and they were in sunglasses. And so it was like, okay, reframe. How do you, how do you recognize someone? So to your point, yes, our expression is how we communicate in so many ways. I learned how to adapt, but we can do it again. And so the good news is, is that I think, you know, we have seen people, businesses, entities, entertainment, we've seen different ways that we've all adjusted to get to a common goal of reducing exposure. And I look forward to the dialogue on how we find that balance point before everybody goes out and throws away their mask, realize there are still places and circumstances where masking is the best way for us to fight this disease and as given its transmission levels. And so I thank everyone for doing what they do, and I'll stop there.
And I just want to say, I agree with so much, or so much, there's a lot of strength and knowledge in what has been said and talked about in terms of this. I think we have taken, and I am extraordinarily grateful that we have the precautionary principle here, which I think needs to be exercised in keeping our community healthy. This morning, as I said during our prayer, we've lost 2,700 lives in Hillsborough County due to COVID. That's 2,700 people that are gone, and their children, their parents, or brothers, or sisters, or coworkers are, you know, living without them any longer. And they, you know, some of those deaths were not preventable, but a good deal of them were had there been vaccinations. Our death rates have gone in Florida to enormous rates just recently. And these deaths were not deaths that happened early before people could get vaccines. So I am very appreciative, Ms. Wise, of the policies that we've done here. I think that they've really saved lives. And that's not to mention people who have gotten very ill, who have been in ICU, who have filled our hospitals, and students who have missed schools, and all the kinds of things that have happened when this disease has just spread. And we have some tools. We have our vaccines, which are really good tools, amazing tools that we have, but also masks. And those masks are really helpful. They might, you know, I'd certainly like to come to a time when we don't have them. And I know at one time, we felt comfortable here for a period of a month or a month and a half. And I felt comfortable, not in the hallways without it, but I felt comfortable in the boardroom. And we were looking at, you know, the commissioners. And as far as I know, the staff has been vaccinated here. We get tests if we opt for them before we come to the meetings here. So, and all of that, I think, has really helped from the spread here at County Center. And it's part of what we're doing, I think, to make sure that we're not spreading the infection. And I'll just say, my office, I think, has been especially careful. I think we have one of the few offices where one of my staff has a child who can't get the vaccination. So, I mean, we're very, we're trying to be really careful in my office because we don't want to be the ones that somehow pass that on to that child, who, incidentally, lost her grandfather to COVID. So, you know, that, I mean, and I'm sure other commissioners could tell some of the same kinds of stories of the effects. But I, I will tell you, I've been watching, and I tried to get updated information. And I'll just say, because it's come up here, thank you to our school board for, I think, taking a really strong and important stand in this community, because it's our community as well that we, as commissioners, are having to deal with the outcomes of. But I think it was really good that they stood up and said that there had to be mask-wearing. I don't think it was an easy thing for them to do in the face of some kinds of community pressure, otherwise, and certainly what our governor did. But I think they took a brave and a good public health move. So I'll just, I'll state that for the record. And the other thing, I'll just say, I went to a classroom yesterday. All the children were wearing masks. It was a first-grade classroom, but it was packed. It was packed. It was really tight. And I'd be really worried about what happened there. We know teachers have passed on to their students when they've taken off the mask when they talked. They've passed on COVID. And we just have to do everything we can. And as Commissioner Smith said, there's classrooms, as we all know. The air conditioning is broken down over and over again, the ventilation for days and days. And, you know, you're exposed, and there's, as has been well documented here, you know, there's no ways of controlling all that. Dr. Green agreed, certain places. So I'll just say that. But one thing, just have to note for the record again, San Francisco, they were in school from August 16th to September 10th, 52,000 students, 10,000 staff. They had zero COVID cases among them, 62,000 people with zero COVID cases. They had a 90% vaccination rate from 12- to 17-year-olds in that school system. And they had masking, and they were being careful. I want to get back to normal like everyone else. I'd like to get beyond this. That's, they're one of the places that are doing it. So with that, I guess, I don't see anyone else wanting to speak. And again, thank you, Ms. Wise. I think the, what we've done here at County Center is commendable and has kept people safe. And so, Ms. Wise, you're on with the next item.
Thank you. We're now ready to move on to commissioners' items. And the first one is Commissioner Myers' item regarding the MBE program as a follow-up to the workshop that we have had.
Ms. Myers, Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to my fellow board members, what an educational experience we had on Thursday, September 30th, as it relates to learning about our MBE-SBE program and why the MBE-SBE program needs to be enhanced. And I won't go back all over what we said and learned on Thursday. So I'll just go directly to the motion and the direct staff to provide the board with recommended enhancements to the county's minority business enterprise program, which would, one, provide more notice to the MBE community so that they can have more time to plan and prepare for subcontracting opportunities, and two, address contracting opportunities for MBE when the county is supplying funds to public partners so that the MB, I'm sorry, so that the B O C C MBE objectives are considered. We all know that with the MBE participation, many of the minority contractors look for opportunities with county government. And with that being said, we will begin to enhance a program that will provide that. And also, communication would help us, along with the various departments, at the beginning of the planning stages so that they can work with our economic development department to say what is coming. So I see this as a twofold, as, one, the communication to all of the MBEs that we start very early on in the planning process, and then letting them know what we have coming forward.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers with a second by Commissioner Overman. And do we have any further, just Commissioner Overman, you're recognized?
Yeah, just a quick question. When you suggest recommended enhancements, are you speaking largely of a communications program or a sign-up program? Do you have anything specifically, a specific objective you'd like to see from our staff that you have in mind?
When we, when I speak of communications, is that what communication that would be going out to the public so that they would know of all the various programs that would be offered? Also, the opportunities, just as we have in the past, have had a couple of projects, a public project that had the dollar amount, but no consideration of the board's MBE objectives. And then how we just award dollar amounts. So I think when they come back with the recommendation, how we can improve and then implement the program as it should be, we would be in great shape. We'd have more minorities participating in the programs. Thank you.
Okay, I see no further comments. I'd just like to say, thank you, Commissioner Myers, I think, and our excellent staff, and in particular Lindsey Kimball, our economic development staff, the workshop that they presented. And for any commissioners who didn't get to see the whole thing, and I know I'd like to watch it again. It's information I've really been wanting for about four years to quite get a better handle on. So I thought it was really excellent information, and I'm glad to see this moving forward. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And just briefly, I do want to add that our MBE, S MBE program in our county is filled with very dedicated staff. I met with Teresa Kempa, as well as Lindsey Kimball, and was very, very impressed with their knowledge off the top of their head of, you know, how many businesses in this, in this specific business might qualify for our program, time and time again. I mean, they're just a wealth of knowledge, but also passion and dedication. So, you know, I just want to say, I am happy to be moving forward. I'm sure that they are as well on our program in this county. Thank you.
Okay, and seeing no further comments, can we please do a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Commissioner Hagan? Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner White's item regarding pickleball amenities at the Bertha and Tony Saladino Park, item F2.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a citizen from District Four reach out to me some time ago, a few weeks ago. And he said, Commissioner White, have you ever heard of pickleball? And I said, boy, have I ever. It is a hot commodity in my 55-plus communities in my district. And this gentleman is not yet 55-plus. And he said, well, let me tell you, it's really catching on with younger baby boomers and even Gen X and younger cohorts. And he said that the sport has become so popular that it's becoming difficult to get time on our existing pickleball courts. So I did a little bit of, and he suggested Bertha and Tony Saladino Park as a proposed location. Just to remind you, Bertha and Tony Saladino Park was kind of a passive-use park, I would say, with a moderate level of utilization, until we added a dog park amenity with COVID. It feels like a year ago, but with COVID, it's probably been two, three years ago now. We've added this dog park amenity, and the utilization of that park has just exploded. So he suggested that as a location that's central, sort of, to the Brandon area. And that, coupled with the dog park amenity, would add to even more utilization of that park. So I did a little bit of homework on the front end before bringing this item. And I have found out that a double pickleball court would not be a particularly big-ticket item and that we would likely have funding from sources like Parks Impact Fees. But, so anyway, so my motion today would be to direct staff to bring back a report at a future board meeting on the feasibility of adding pickleball amenities to the Bertha and Tony Saladino Park, and to include a recommendation on funding if facilities are feasible. feasible.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White and it's been seconded by Commissioners Myers and Smith. And Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized?
I just have a question for the maker of the motion. That sounds wonderful. I wonder though if we ought to ask staff, they might have some ideas on other parks that would be appropriate sites too. And we might be surprised to hear that there are other places where we can put the courts. They certainly are in demand. You are, no doubt about that.
Madam Chair, I would accept that as a motion for a formal amendment or just as a friendly amendment, whatever you prefer.
I'll, I'll go with friendly amendments. Okay. So we do have that motion by Commissioner White and seconded by Commissioners Myers and Smith. And seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We're now ready to move to the staff reports. Item G2 is to receive a report regarding the procedure for debaring vendors. This came up by Commissioner Myers as it related to the WCI contract, and Scott Stromer can present the item.
Good morning, Scott Stromer, Peril Services. On August 4th, 2021, the Board requests a report regarding the procedures for debaring vendors in consideration of those procedures in the case of performance earlier this year by Waste Connections of Florida Incorporated. For some background, on January 24, 2013, Waste Connections was awarded a contract to provide residential and commercial solid waste collection services in certain areas of the county through September 30, 2020. That contract was modified five times, the last of which extended the contract through January, January 31st, 2022. In June of 2021, Waste Connections began missing a significant number of homes in its assigned areas of the county, which adversely impacted residents for a sustained period. On July 19th, 2021, the county administrator sent a letter to Waste Connections outlining the failures and directing immediate actions to correct the same. In response, it appears Waste Connections took the county administrator's direction very seriously, implemented numerous measures to mitigate the underlying issues, and the Solid Waste Management Division reports the firm's performance quickly improved and continues to be satisfactory. The Board's procurement policy delegates to the Director of Procurement the authority to debar a person or entity from future consideration for award of contracts based on cause. Additionally, the procurement procedures manual outlines specific steps for debarment. Debarments cannot exceed 24 months unless, unless specifically approved by the Board, and debarments cannot have any effect on existing contracts except to be taken into consideration when deciding whether to exercise a renewal option. Debarred persons or entities are not eligible for awards of new contracts for the duration of the debarment period. Some of the reasons for debarment include violations of contract or solicitation provisions, without good cause, a deliberate failure to perform in accordance with the specifications, or a recent record of failures performed or unsatisfactory performance in accordance with the terms of one or more contracts, provided that any failure to perform or unsatisfactory performance caused by acts beyond the control of the contractor may not be considered as a basis for debarment. The Director of Procurement is required to issue a written decision to debar, and the decision must state the reasons for the action taken and inform the debarred person or entity of its right to administrate review of the decision. The person or entity has the right to appeal the Director of Procurement's decision to the county administrator, whereupon the county administrator can either uphold or overturn the Director's decision. In the event the county administrator upholds the Director's decision to debar, then the person or entity has the right to appeal the debarment to the Board. If the decision is appealed to the Board, the Board's decision is final and conclusive. In the matter involving Waste Connections, there appears to be a reasonable blend of market forces that are outside the vendor's control and business decisions that are within its control. In the end, Waste Connections is responsible for remitting its contractual obligations regardless of its status as a future service provider. In contrast, the other waste collection service providers appear to have continued to reasonably meet their respective contractual obligations during the same period and under the same market pressures. The new contracts for residential and commercial waste collection services, which do not include Waste Connections, will begin on February 1st, 2022, and continue through September 30, 2030. As a result, Waste Connections will effectively be precluded from providing formal residential and commercial waste collection services in the county for over eight years. Debarments are generally temporary, again, up to two years, to allow businesses the opportunity to improve, correct underlying problems, and compete for the county's business in the future. The past performance and responsibility of persons and entities are considered when evaluating responses to solicitations. Therefore, when or if a new solicitation is issued for waste collection or any other services, Waste Connections' past performance and the actions taken to resolve previous issues will be carefully considered and evaluated accordingly. With regard to Waste Connections specifically, the Board really has three options. The first option is to continue monitoring Waste Connections' performance under the current contract and exercise the remedies provided when or if performance does not meet the prescribed service levels. The second option is to send a letter to Waste Connections with a firm reminder that any and all failures performed will be considered and evaluated as responses to future solicitations. If the second option is selected, I will prepare and send a letter to Waste Connections that includes a set of points raised by the Board. The third option is to formally pursue debarment for a period of two years or other timeframe deemed appropriate by the Board. If the third option is selected, I will notify Waste Connections in writing and initiate the debarment process, which will afford Waste Connections due process and an opportunity to appeal the decision to, to debar. With that, I'll turn it back over to the Chair for discussion, and I am here for questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank our procurement directors, Scott Stromer and our Assistant County Attorney, Sam Hamilton, for the educational experience they gave me and why this project should not be debarred. And so I thank them for sharing that with me as a teachable moment for me. However, I do recommend that this boy sends a letter to Waste Management at the end of their contract. We all know during some time, we were having some heecups with this particular firm and we received many, many emails of the trash not being picked up. So if Waste Connection wants to do business with the county in the future, we will have some documentation in their file that relates to what happened in county government this year with them picking up trash.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers and a second, second by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner White, you're recognized?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to state for the record that this pertains to Waste Connections, Waste Connections.
Sorry about that, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized?
Thank you. It's, I am a customer of Waste Connections as well as a Commissioner with many constituents in that zone of garbage. So I'm well aware of the problems that that vendor went through. But it seems like our last measure of contacting them and, you know, working with them has resulted in greatly improved service. And so I think that's already in the record. And at this time, I think they're meeting our contractual, their contractual obligations, our expectations. And so I would, I would reserve the next steps until, unless and until they're needed, unless and until this vendor falls down in our expectations or in the delivery of their services. I don't think another sanction is warranted at this point, given that they have really gone to great lengths and great expense to, to, to serve their customers. If we, if we were to give another sanction at this time when they are performing well, it could cost them again in, in terms of staffing and ability to carry out the remaining period of their contract. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't support another letter at this time. I would hold that in, in reserve till a time that they're not meeting their, their obligation. And I would, I would say that, again, that they've gone to great expense and, in ramping up to, to meet their service levels after our last round of disappointment with them. So I think we're on good footing moving forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized?
Thank you. And, and I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear about what, what the motion is because I think what I, I heard from Mr. Stromer was that we had three options, and I'm assuming that, that the three options he mentioned is monitor and, and see how we go. And if at that time, we find there's a failure, that we would need to address it at that time. Secondly, send a letter of, of putting on the record that we are dissatisfied, I'm assuming, of the, with the service. And then thirdly, debarment. So if, if Commissioner Myers, if you could assist me in understanding if your motion is in line with any one of those three descriptions, option one, two, or three, are we talking about the option two?
Two.
Okay, all right. I would need some clarity, too. And with that, I, while I agree that, that we've had a significant problem, I also agree that the company seemed to have responded to the corrective measures we took earlier. And I, I've seen very few incidences of a problem since then, and at no greater rate than the current providers we have that are working with them now and those that are continuing in the future. So while I, I understand the concern, I'm not sure I can support the motion as it stands.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized?
Well, first of all, you know, I, I was definitely prepared not to support disbarment or debarment when this came up, because I think you're correct, that they have taken corrective actions. Much of this was beyond their control. But I do think it's important that we say something on the record on behalf of the customers that were, that, and Commissioner Smith said she's a customer. I'm not a customer of Waste Connections, but had I been and had I experienced what, what some of the customers went through, I would have been just as angry as some of the people that were contacting my office. And I don't think it's inappropriate to send a letter documenting what happened. I think the real issue is what exactly the letter says. I think the letter, the, the letter can certainly acknowledge that they have taken corrective steps and that they have, have done some things to improve the situation. But I'm afraid if we don't put ourselves on record on this, if we don't at least write something, that this whole incident could get lost. And while it's true that there's not going to be bidding for waste collection until 2030, and it's also true that, 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 that we have longer to go in the contract, and we're certainly going to continue to keep monitoring, I, I think it's not a bad idea to go ahead and document what happened. And I don't think the letter needs to be threatening. I think it can, it can acknowledge what they've done to cure, but I do think that we ought to, I do think that we ought to, to make some sort of formal communication to them. And that's what, what it makes me inclined to support the motion. And, and of course, it's going to depend a lot on what the letter says.
I'll recognize you in a second, Commissioner Smith. But before, this isn't just a letter, right? I mean, I would just like to hear from our legal staff and maybe procurement. This is part of a procurement process, like a debarment letter. It says, I wrote a letter with firm reminder, but I mean, we've already been involved extensively with Waste Connections and the issues that they've had. There's been letter, communication, if I'm not mistaken, even a fine. I know that there's a lot that they've already done to remedy this problem, which partially is they no longer have a contract with the county, but also they've had COVID hitting them and all our service providers had that. So this is, there have been letters and those letters have remedied the situation. It's not as if there's not letters on the record acknowledging or process acknowledging what has happened. But this is, it seems to be beyond that. Can you just characterize this?
Well, Chair Kemp, I'll, I'll leave it to Scott Stromer to talk about what we've done in the past and so forth. What I understood, we were discussing here, was really a way of memorializing the Board's concerns. I assume the letters from, in the past, came from staff. I'll have Mr. Stromer clarify that, but it's really a, I just understood it to be a memorialization, not going so far as a debarment, but creating that record from the Board.
Thank you. Mr. Stromer?
Yes. So the letter that went from the county administrator really went through the issues and that has been documented by the department in solid ways, because you know, they corresponded with them too when there were some issues. Like I said, the county administrator's letter, they took that very seriously and that's why they took the action. The second option is really simply a reminder letter. It certainly can be also a thank you for, you know, taking care of those issues and just that we are still watching. It's just, the second option, the way I designed it, is just a reminder letter if it's necessary. But every indication is that they are performing satisfactory, you know, very satisfactory performance to this point, so.
Okay, so there's already been a letter, this would just be a reminder letter, when they're already performing satisfactorily? I'll just, I'll just say, I think, you know, we've gotten performance and, you know, I, I don't know what Commissioner Smith is going to say here, but to me, it's, it's a good thing to hold in reserve. We still have many more months of service and this, to me, would not be the time or the circumstances to do that. But Commissioner Smith, you're recognized?
Yes, we had similar failures with a different waste hauler before the, the troubles that WCI went, went through and when they were encountering the COVID shortages. And, and the other waste hauler, I'm, I'm not going to name them at this point, but we, we did, you know, send them from the administration, similarly to how we have done to Waste Connections. We sent them letters from the administration and, and there's that record and we've worked out the problems with that vendor. Did we then need to send a reminder letter from the Board? Does Mr. Stromer maybe remember? I mean, I'm trying to understand, we've got these three options. The first option is to continue monitoring the performance under the current contract while they're, you know, and at this time, they're performing well as well as any of our vendors, and exercise the remedies provided in the same when and if performance does not meet the prescribed service levels. And that's what I'm inclined to do at this point. The second option is to send a letter with a firm reminder from the Board of any of all failures, a reminder of the, the things we've already memorialized in writing, in their record. It's not like it's going to be lost in the sauce if they apply for another contract. But I, I'd like to just ask the question, did we do that before when we were dealing with the failures of, of the other waste hauler?
Yep. So in that case, you know, it was very similar. We sent a letter to the vendor, they responded favorably, they took the steps necessary and they, and they got back on track. So I'm not, I don't recall any follow-up letters because they were performing and they, they took care of business as far as I recall. But I don't recall any letter going again.
Thank you. I don't recall that either. And, and so I don't, I don't see why it would be warranted in this case over that case. Thank you very much.
Commissioner White, you're recognized?
Thank you. I, I may have a bad memory, but my recollection of the issues with the other hauler previously is that it did not rise to the level that this most recent issue rose to. So I do believe there's So I do believe there's validity in Commissioner Myers' motion to send that letter. I'm, I'm counting votes here. I, I think there's a, a chance at four votes, Commissioner Myers, but in listening to all of the conversation, particularly Commissioner Cohen's concerns, I am going to move to put in, to place an amendment on the floor that would direct staff to bring a draft of the letter to the board for review before it goes out. That's my motion to amend.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion. Okay, we have Commissioner White makes amendment, and Commissioner Overman seconds it. Do we have any further discussion on that? Seeing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Thank you. Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, now we're back on to the main motion. Is there any more discussion on the main motion, which is a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Cohen to do option number two, as stated, a letter? So, oh, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Okay, so I'm, I'm understanding that we're going to have an opportunity to, since the past amendment passed, to an opportunity to review the letter that would include a reminder of the terms of the agreement, along with an acknowledgement of improvement at this point, which would then require us to act between now and the end of their contract in the event that that failure should occur. Is that, is that where we are? And when would, when would the letter come back for review? What, what date would we actually be revealing this, given that their contract ends on December 31st, if I'm not mistaken?
Can we have a date from staff? I guess we would.
I can have that ready for the next meeting. That's, that's not difficult.
Okay.
Okay. I, I just needed some clarification there, because we're looking at eight weeks, 10 weeks, something like that, so, just asking. Thank you very much.
Okay. And seeing no further comments, at this time, we'll, we'll move to the main motion. If you could please do a roll call vote.
Chair Kemp?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, four to three. Chair Kemp, Commissioner Overman, and Smith voted no.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The last item is a quarterly report on the water demand from Water Resources regarding South County water, and that's item G3. George Cassidy will take us through a brief presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. George Cassidy, Public Utilities. I will share my screen. So we had, we, we've had some, some good results over the last couple of months. If you, if you look at the second slide, we've got a recording of the number of complaints over the summer period of time. And of course, we were blessed with a, a nice wet summer. The rains came, and as expected, our demands went down appreciably. We went from a high of 136 complaints in May down south to 27 during the months of July and August, and I'm happy to report that September was even a little bit lower. We, we had 26 complaints in September. If you looked at our flow across that time period, and this is a graph that compares our actuals to our projections, the red being the projected amount, and the, the light blue line is the actuals. And so with our, our wet winter, a wet winter, wet summer, as would be expected, our demands were slightly less than the projected amounts, which was all good. Good news coming up very shortly is that our short-term projects to help flow and pressure in that south portions of our county, they're moving along very well. Our South County repump facility is due to be completed in the next month. That will certainly help with pressures and flows. Also, our inline booster pump station, while it's due to be completed in April, we do have an interim fix that will also be completed in, in the November-December timeframe that should also be very, very helpful with pressures and flows. Overall, looking good. In our next update, our quarterly update, probably in January, I'll, I'll be able to report the success of those projects coming online. Of course, our longer-term solutions, our new plants in the south and additional capability, that, that's proceeding right now in design and soon to be advertised for construction, so that's in the '25-'26 timeframe. Everything's looking good. We're, we're well-positioned to meet our dry season of '22, to, to be better than we were this past dry season. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and that's a great report, and it is so important that we are facing the facts with our water supply and demand, the good news and the bad news, so we can deal with the problems before they get worse. And, and, you know, it's great that we've had a rainy season in the short term, but our, you know, the scary part is the long term, and whether we're going to be able to bring those pieces of infrastructure in on time, depending on how fast our, our county is going to grow. And, and I'll say that Tampa Bay Water is also finally facing the facts of this, you know, these, these upcoming pinch points and the, and the current problem of, of everyone in South County being on water restrictions, everyone in South County having reduced water pressure. I was just on Telemundo, again, with news channels asking me, what's going on with the water pressure, and how are we going to address that, and then showing some residents turning on their faucet, little trickle coming out, talking about how they can't shampoo their hair. So we're already at that stretch to the breaking point, and we need to be very careful moving forward. Now, can you put slide three back up on the, on the monitor? That's the slide with the, with the projected demand, based on our projected growth. Right, thank you. And, you know, you can see that the demand is still being projected to kind of flatten out, like it's not going straight up from how it's been the last few years, but it's, it's kind of being projected to flatten out. And what are we basing that flattening on, given the fact that, that the, the demand, the growth over the last couple of years skyrocketed faster than we had projected, adding 7 million gallons a day? What makes us think that demand is, is going to flatten out? And have, have, has any work been done recently to ensure that our projections are more accurate, so they won't surprise us like, like they did, again, like they did in the last couple of years?
Really good question, Commissioner. And so you're talking about that light blue line that's represented on this graph?
Well, the red line with, with the projected demand seems to like not be going up as fast as it has in the last few years, but, and not as straight up at the same angle, but kind of flattening out over time.
Commissioner, that, that's, that is purely a function of the population projections that, that we get from, you know, Bieber and from the census tract, and so that information is used ultimately to determine how many people are going to move into South County, and whether they move into the north part of the county, into the city of Tampa, or south part. So, you know, we work very closely with Swift Mud, who also looks at population projections and supply requirements to meet a growing population and a growing customer base. And so these are the numbers that we, we have and that we've gotten, and unless we had some additional information, this is what we're going to go by. We're, we're going to, we're going to provide adequate supply and demand capabilities based on this particular graph. I mean, we, none of us want to be in the position that we've been in in the last couple of years, and so as we go forward, we're going to make sure that we have robust delivery capability.
Thank you, and, and I very much appreciate the hard work and dedication of our county staff in the Water Utilities Department, and your creative solutions for addressing this problem with, with some short-term Band-Aids that we could put on. On that slide, it noted that the projected demand for 2028 is 62.9 million gallons, almost 63 million gallons in 2028. We will have only 63.6 million gallons a day of permitted capacity, according to the other charts we've seen before, until Tampa Bay Water's new pipeline is complete. So that's a 0.7 million gallons a day margin of error if the pipeline is completed in time, and if our growth projections are correct precisely, so that they, you know, we eke by that. So it's a, it's a very narrow margin of error, considering it's 0.7 million gallons a day margin of error is narrow, considering that the, we added seven, not 0.7, but 7 million gallons a day over the last two years. And that was, you know, that was surprising. So we, I'm very glad that we're keeping an eye on this problem, and as, as we, you know, consider new developments outside the urban service area that would be adding to this, this problem, that we're all looking at the two sides of attacking the problem to prevent it from getting any worse. One is providing infrastructure to provide more water and more water pressure, to rush in the big projects, but also put these interim Band-Aids in place that our, our department has been doing with the new valves and stuff, and, but also, the other side is to ensure the concurrency of growth with the infrastructure. So we need to make sure our projections are accurate, and we're reviewing each new application for permitting to ensure that they will not lower the level of service to the customers that are already here and currently suffering a lower level of service than anywhere else in the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and, and I'm pleased that this is being brought back to us on a quarterly basis. I think it's a really significant, important issue that we need to kind of keep our finger on, so thank you for that. And with that, it looks like we are, Ms. Wise, at the end of our agenda?
We are. We're just on future issues.
Or lunch and future issues, but not in that order. Okay, so, and future issues, anyone?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding COVID vaccinations, it's my understanding that there are federal rules in place for employers, and we also obviously have county policies and incentives. I know we're still in negotiations with the fire union on issues related to vaccinations, but I'm afraid that all of this is causing confusion and angst among our employees, the, the federal rules, what we're doing in terms of incentives, so on and so forth, union negotiations. So I'd like to ask county staff to bring to the board a report that'll detail exactly where we are on the issue of vaccinations for employees, to include at a minimum the following: what, if anything, federal COVID vaccination rules mean for Hillsboro County employees, where we are on incentivizing vaccinations, to answer the question of whether or not we require vaccinations for employees in any situation such as new hires, and do we have plans to mandate vaccinations for our employees.
Okay, and Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to ask the county administration and the county attorney's office to come back at our next meeting with a report on Gopher Resources.
Okay, and I do not see any other future items, so with that, we stand adjourned.